I'd like for us to pass around, Kelly, would you mind just grabbing them and pass them down? So everybody who's here needs to sign both of those sheets for each public hearing so that we have a record as to who attended. And so hopefully you've had an opportunity. Let me go over this since it's hard to read, it's so small. We do department head reports. We have two council meetings a month, so we do half of the departments, one meeting, half the other. We'll have various board reports. Then we're gonna adjourn for the public hearing on rezoning. After that, then after the hearing concludes, we'll reconvene and consider an ordinance on rezoning the property. Then we will suspend the meeting again to have a public hearing on property abatement. And we'll take a look at each of the various properties affected and discuss those. And then there are various resolutions to deal with those. And then we will have a resolution that we're gonna address about an alcoholic beverage control license for change, basically is what it is, for an already licensed entity in Columbiana. And then a proclamation and just deal with some other business, the mayor's reports, announcements, and so on and so forth. So kind of jam-packed. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the April the 4th regular council meeting. The council members have received a copy of those minutes and had the opportunity to review those. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, if there are none, you can let the record show that the minutes were approved by unanimous consent of the council. And the first thing we're gonna do is start with our department reports, and we got the police department first.
So everything's in line. Still have the one on the job injury, which is still, Officer Peppers, he's still out with an arm injury. Hopefully we'll see some improvement on him in the next few weeks. Budget's fine. Still have two positions open for officer. Vehicle's in good shape, equipment's in good shape, training continues for 2023. Highest opportunities, we're still taking applications for police officer. And then other will be issues and concerns, the slowing traffic at city ballparks. And then we'd be driving on the sidewalks, which would be people pulling up to the concession stand at the sports complex. That has actually slowed down here in the past week. We've dealt with a few people and had some conversations and hopefully word is spreading that you can't drive up to the concession stand at the sports complex. That's about it.
How about the guys in the academy, are they things now?
I guess we've got seven weeks till the guy.
Okay.
Can you address the issue that was about the lockdown at schools?
Yeah, so today, I guess around noonish, we got a call from Shelby County. Somebody waved down, one of the deputies coming down, Highway 28, close to Myrtle, said that they saw a man walking along the sidewalk with a gun. Of course, we called Sasha, put the elementary school and the high school on a lot now, I think, as well as the Board of Education. After being in the area for a little bit, we come to discover that it was not a man walking up and down the sidewalk with a gun, it was actually a guy working on, I think it's 302 Ferry Road, the house that's been purchased there that they're remodeling on, he's actually had a nail gun without nailing up siding. That was the conclusion to that. So everything's taken off lockdown and nothing, no danger in the area.
So there was a lockdown in Chelsea about the same time, I think, today. Do you have any details on that?
I have not heard anything.
So there was a sheriff's department notice that I saw on Google. I had, when I was looking to see if I could find something on our lockdown, they had an incident, I wanna say it was at Chelsea Middle School, but don't hold me to that. And apparently they did apprehend somebody, don't have any more details than that, and that was around lunchtime today. So I thought maybe it might have just spread or something, but no, it was the nail gun. And they are dangerous.
Yeah. We just, you know, we want, of course, tell everybody, you know, if you see something, say something. We would much rather go out, put the schools on lockdown, Board of Education on lockdown, and find somebody walking around with a, you know, doing some work with a nail gun as to actually have somebody with a gun. So, you know, better safe than sorry.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, thanks, Chief. Administration?
Everything is good with admin, no safety issues. Budget is on track, we're fully staffed, no repairs needed at this time, and our training is up to date.
It's a perfect world.
It is.
Normally, in the second council meeting of every month, when Charlene talks about budget, we have a little chart up there with our most recent budget, which would have been the month of March for us. I have a requirement I have to address at this meeting, so I'm gonna address that in the mayor's report part of it. So those of you who are used to seeing that, you will get to see it. Municipal court? I thought I saw the judge there.
I've been gone all day, so I live in Birmingham, doing some business, so I looked at this very briefly yesterday. Kelly and I talked about it on the phone. No major changes, everybody's getting their training, judge's training will be in November. The kiosk continues to help us with our collections. Prosecutor and public defender are working really well together. Had a huge court last time, being first court day of the month. The big item is our driving school. We had our first driving school. I understand everything went well. I am going to go to one to see what they are. Other municipalities have done this, and it's worked pretty well, and we've sent people to other municipalities, and they just finally get us, well, we got the people to do that here, why don't we do it here? And so we put that together, Lisa and Terry and primarily, they put it together with the chief. We've got an officer certified to teach that course here. And so I understand the first one went quite well. We're trying to limit it to a 10 or 11, and we have 11 in the first one. We're gonna see how that plays out as time goes along. Everything, everything's running fairly smoothly. Again, anybody who wants to, welcome to come, it is a public court, we are a public court. We have a new, and it's a state person, a court referral officer, we call them the CROs. If we sentence somebody in a drug case, we send them to the CRO person, which is a state person that does an evaluation of that person for various things. They can recommend sentencing guidelines and that sort of thing. But anyway, we have a new one of those, he was first time in the court last time, and I think did a fine job, but he's been with the state for a while. But everything running along nicely. The driving school's a nice addition, I think, and no real concerns. We have, we have some people in jail. I think, Chief, we've got some of our frequent flyers, as we call them, or repeat offenders, we have some in jail that they flipped from being a county prisoner to a city prisoner, and they'll flip back to being a county prisoner. We try not to let them sit very long as a city prisoner because of the cost. But we had one this week that flipped from a county prisoner to a city prisoner, and then within two days flipped back to a county prisoner. So he's not costing us any money, he's in jail. So anyway, things are running along. Any particular questions or anybody who wants to come and see after what works, you're certainly welcome to. Any questions?
Questions for the judge?
No questions.
Thank you, sir.
Everything is wonderful.
That's almost as good as Charlene's chart, it's all green.
Almost, I gotta catch up if it's almost.
So the streets are safer now through the driving school, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, some of us could probably, could benefit from attending. Public works, Alan?
All right, so everything's running pretty smooth. We've got both of our big trucks back on, out, running the routes and stuff and everything. Finally got one, it had a turbocharger messed up on it, finally gotta get back, it's up running. We're using it as backup truck in the yard and doing the businesses during the week and stuff. Got three positions, I had another, Pat wanted to quit last, week before last, said he wanted to move on and go back to what he was doing and stuff. Other than that, everything's fine. We're, everybody's out steady. We eat and cut the grass and trying to keep the brooks picked up and working in the parks and stuff. We've had some, few electrical problems up at baseball field we had to work on and everything to get a company to come in and work on that force and everything. But other than that, everything is running fine.
So on your opportunities, you got about the new shop, 80% complete on the demolition and new numbers. Can you give us an update on where we are and what the plan is?
Right now, far as the city guys and stuff, we've tore, we've tore everything off the siding and everything except the top. We're thinking, we're looking to get by tackling it, we just don't know if we want to or not because I just got one or two of these. I trust getting up there, walking around and taking, undoing and stuff. Far as the numbers, I talked to our engineer that's been working with us on this, he said he should have something by the end of the week, and one of the folks here in town that's looking at it said he should have his by the end of the week, and then we'll be able to see which way we need to head on far as getting it back out and everything and trying to get a better price than what we did the first time.
Okay. And so is the plan to just go with the siding first, or are you gonna still do some paving and siding?
They're separating their bid out. Sheet metal work will be in one bid, and grating work will be in another bid and everything.
Okay. So maybe a week or so we'll have something that we put out? You guys have any questions for Alan?
No, I've driven by there a couple times, it looks better than it did, so there's a lot of work to do.
After you're getting that siding off of this building, it's like...
It's funny, you can remove the siding from a building and make it look better.
That's right. Doors are still there.
Yeah, that's right.
Did you say you had three openings?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Board reports, so did the planning commission meet?
We did, we met last week. We approved the plat for Springs Crossing Sector 4, that is 34 additional lots. And we approved a rezoning application for 21066 Highway 25. They're wanting to go from B1 to B2, that's the new tire shop that's like next to Napa.
Used to be the cornhole.
Used to be the cornhole building. Right now, they're a used car lot, but they also wanna do mechanic work there, you know, on their vehicles and everything. So we did approve their application. There'll be a public hearing with the planning commission in May, and then if it's, if that's approved, then it'll come to city council in June.
Any questions for planning commission?
They've tabled that one for...
Yeah, we had another application, but there was some discussion about the property lines and everything, so we tabled that application until we can get more clarification. So that should come back up at the next planning and zoning meeting in May.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Recreation board, did they meet?
Will meet in May, but we did release some information about fight football, so that will kick off in May, go through June, and the season will start in July, so that'll be a lot of excitement for that, something new, it'll be good.
July?
End of July.
Won't that be hot?
Very hot.
Water board meet? I'm sorry, any questions for Ricky?
Water board?
Just had a regular business meeting.
I did see with the water board, the water department's open for employee, right?
Yeah, they are, we do have one, they have one job open.
Are there any other boards that we need to have a report besides what's on this chart? Okay. All right, this is where it starts getting interesting. So what we're gonna do now is suspend this meeting to have the public hearing. So proper notice of this regular scheduled council meeting was given in advance of this public meeting, and the notice has remained posted through this scheduled meeting. So right now, I will entertain a motion to suspend the regularly scheduled council meeting in order to have a public hearing. I like that motion to suspend the regular meeting. There's a second? Okay. And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. It has to be unanimous.
Council member Lily?
Here.
Mazel?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, so the regular council meeting's been suspended, and I'll call to order the public hearing to hear for anyone, well, before I do that, before I ask for hearing from anybody, just to give everybody an overview of what this hearing is about. It's about rezoning a property at 22676 Highway 25 from R1 to B1. And this is a little bit of an unusual situation. The, the property fronts the Highway 25 bypass, and the rear of the property abuts or is adjacent old Highway 25. And so the property is split zoned, that that is facing the Highway 25 bypass, which is essentially Highway 25 now, and then is zoned B1 business. And then the portion that is adjacent and abuts old Highway 25 is zoned R1. So the purpose of this rezoning request in this hearing is to consolidate that into one zoning classification and make it all B1. So that's the purpose of this, and you can see on the map, I took the maps, I've given you the cartoon, if you will, and then the aerial view. So first, I'd like to hear for anyone speaking for, we're gonna hear from anyone speaking for or against rezoning of the tax parcel 216241001047.000 from split zoning D1 and R1 to R1. So is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this rezoning request? Yes, sir.
Well, that's my property up there, and I didn't know it was half of that, but anyway, it's pointed out, and I understand that that's not really a protocol anyway. So anyway, it needs to be fixed. But anyway, it is, fronts two major roads, as a major corporation wants to put in a multimillion dollar business there. It'd be very lucrative to the city, and it'd be beneficial to the community. Nobody is impeded by this, that I say. Nobody's driveway, nobody's access or egress is affected by this. It has approximately, well, 200 foot plus on each one of those roads, open on each side. Approximately two acres. And so anyway, that's the reason I need it changed.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would...
And the other thing is, is that the attorneys that I'm using say that the city council has sole responsibility as far as zoning property, and that's it. Sole responsibility.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of this rezoning request?
I drafted the contract. It is a national company. Be a big, it will be, it will be an asset to the city. It's a national company. I've dealt with lawyers all over the country. They submitted Dr. Thornburg's contract, he sent it to me, and we basically trashed it, rewrote it under language that Alabama lawyers can understand, not New York lawyers. And got it all in order, it's signed, and the contingency on, one of the contingencies on closing is the proper zoning of the property. So that's, that's been this whole process that we have gone through, and it would be an asset to the city. I mean, I cannot state, you probably know, I cannot state what it is, but I know what the store would look like, I've seen schematics of it. I'm not at liberty to discuss the name, but it would be an asset to the city.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak in favor of the rezoning? Okay. If, if no one else to speak in favors, is there anyone present who would like to speak against the zoning request? Yes, sir?
I'm Alan Wright. I own the property directly across old Highway 25, and I've owned that property since 1985. I built a house there in 1987, and I believe it's gonna affect the value of my property. I understand the gains that the city would have, I understand the gains that Dr. Thornburg will have. I will say that the reason it's split, this came up in the mid-'90s, and it was R1, I hope this property was R1 then. And I agree, along with the council then, Mayor Strickland, Dr. Thornburg, and myself, that to be fair, we would split it and allow them to zone the bypass side B1, but leave the other as R1, as a buffer to the community. Well, I took that agreement, you know, and that was my word then, and that's my word now. Obviously, there's nothing in writing, there's nothing signed. I did come to the zoning meeting, I was told that times have changed. Well, maybe times have changed, but my word has not changed. So it will affect me, there's no doubt. There'll be unintended consequences. I mean, you're gonna put a business there, that's a neighborhood, that's my home. Obviously, there's gonna be traffic concerns, noise concerns, environmental concerns, safety concerns that really haven't been considered, in my opinion. So I do oppose it. There's, obviously, I was told by the zoning committee that there was no application made for, but there hasn't been one, that they were just doing this to clean up split zone issues around the city. But then Mike Atchison, who's the lawyer at that meeting, with Dr. Thornburg's counsel, said that this had been in planning for some time. So there was obviously something going on there. And yeah, I'm emotional, I'm passionate about it, it's my, it's my house. I raised two kids, I raised a family there, I've lived there my whole life. My wife has lived in Columbia her whole life. I've lived there my whole adult life. So yeah, I got a stake in it, I'm a stakeholder here. I got literally five acres there. I developed that property from nothing. That property was kudzu and pine trees and a pig farm, and I developed it from nothing, and, I mean, I'm proud of it, it's a decent home, decent property. But I, I just feel like it's gonna affect the value of my property. I can't imagine it wouldn't. Probably a win for the city, probably a win for Dr. Thornburg, but not a win for Alan Wright. And probably not a win for the neighbors around it as well. I'm just the one with the most eludes because it's directly across from me. So I'm, I'm in opposition. I urged the council to, you know, consider the agreement that was made in the mid-'90s and, and keep that in place, but, you know, it is, Dr. Thornburg is lying, I did seek counsel, it is your decision. There are no advantages and total advantages. So, I mean, I have no recourse but to, you know, to ask that this not be done.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning?
What's the nature of the business?
What's that?
What type of business is the owner? I'll live with the owner.
It seems to be a secret. I mean, it was known in the planning meeting, but it was not shared.
Is that something you're at liberty to share? The nature of the business?
I can attest as far as to say it's retail.
If it's a, if it's a big secret, it's that close to my home and I suppose.
Okay, is there anybody, do you have anything else you wish to add to that, or is...
No, I mean, I have a, I have big enough issues with property values where I live, you know, the things that goes on around me, so, I mean, if it's a secret, you know, we don't know exactly what's going to go in, you know, I might get my raise abandoned there. So I would advise it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning?
This is a summary of my opposition, I've copied it for everybody.
All right, appreciate that. Okay, if there is no more, no one else who wishes to speak on this particular matter, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'd like the judge to adjourn.
All right, so I don't think we need a roll call for the adjournment, but all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so the public hearing is adjourned, and we will now reconvene the regular council meeting. So the, the next item on the agenda is to consider an ordinance for rezoning the property. But before we do that, is there any discussion from the city council, any members of the council?
To me, I would kinda like to know more about the business and the plan that they're gonna have for the property.
Right.
Because if it's just gonna be a free-for-all thing, then I, you know, I agree with him and I agree with both sides, I do. But I just think we need to know more about how they're gonna build it, what's gonna be the access to the property, because it'll be on both sides, is that gonna be their plan?
Right. And so our city attorney's here, so I'm gonna pose a question to you, if I may, Bill. So are we at a point to where if someone wants to develop that property, we could impose stipulations, if you will, that would say the access would have to be from the Columbiana bypass, Highway 25, and that perhaps there would be some sort of, using shrubbery trees, whatever, some sort of blind, if you will, to hide the backside of the property from the, from the old 25 that's facing the residential area? Is that something that could be done or imposed if the property were rezoned prior to approving a commercial development?
Yes, Alabama law allows what's called conditional rezoning.
Right.
Where the council can impose certain conditions to the rezoning rather than just rezone straight B1.
Okay.
So the answer is yes, you can do that. Now, if you make, if you add conditions, the law also says you're gonna have to re-advertise the ordinance.
We'll be going through this again, yeah.
With the conditions in it, and have another public hearing on the amended ordinance with the conditions in it.
I'm sorry, the public hearing's over, so we're just, we're gonna conduct the council business now. Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions or comments from anyone on the council?
I'd like to ask a question. Why is it that it's a secret? Because we have people that belong to Columbia.
If, I can, I can tell you one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're dealing with a national company, okay? And that's the way national companies operate. Most of you do not know, probably nobody in this room knows. I'm the attorney that's representing District 31 Development, okay? It's going to be a $150 million development. There's all kind of privacy, secrecy stuff that you sign when you represent people like that, okay? If, if this council wants to go into an executive session, I'll be happy to tell you what, what it is. But it would have to be an executive session. I'd be happy to. I mean, I've seen the schematics of building. It's not going to be a surprise.
But, you finished, Mr. Lee?
Yeah.
Okay. But to that point, can you answer that we're not, we're not dealing with some fly-by-night, small shop?
Absolutely not. You're dealing with a national company that's got probably 5,000 stores in the United States.
So you're dealing with a corporation, not necessarily a small business-type venture?
Oh, you're, you're dealing with a big and dollar company.
Can, it is a public corporation?
Public corporation.
So, so that's another issue, and public corporations are typically very hush-hush about their business plans going forward for competitive purposes. Also, for, to keep people from speculating on the stock, if you will, as well. So there's a variety of reasons, so I can understand why there is some secrecy involved in that. Doesn't solve our problem. I'm looking for a way, and wanted to have this discussion, was the reason my question for the city attorney. Is there a way where we can do this that would be beneficial to all the parties involved? There is one other thing that I wanted to address, if I may, and then we can come back if there's more discussion. First, the comment about it's the city council's decision, and, and that's true. The, the planning commission basically makes a recommendation. They do their own hearing, and they're the ones, obviously, that are knowledgeable and, and expert in our land use regulations, our zoning ordinances, et cetera, et cetera. And, and so their role is to make a recommendation to the city council. The city council will either approve or disapprove this recommended ordinance after today's hearing and at this meeting. But I also wanted to bring other, one other thing that the planning commission does. And the planning commission is responsible for this. In fact, this is the number-one responsibility of the planning commission, and that is to develop what we call a comprehensive plan. The statute that imposes this requirement calls it a master plan, but it's commonly referred to by cities and counties in the state as a comprehensive plan. And it's a very detailed study and analysis that looks at future growth and, and forecasts and plans for land use requirements based upon future growth projections, as well as feedback and input from the citizenry. Now, this one was done and was accepted by the city council. Most of the research was done in early 2016. It was adopted by the city council in November of 2016. And, and there were surveys sent out to the population in Columbiana. There were hearings and meetings about this planning. And I'm, I'm not trying to, I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way, but oftentimes, people don't come to the hearings, like this one that we're having today for the zoning, rezoning, or they don't respond to these surveys that come out. So the, the commission and their consultant that they use then take all of that information that they've gathered, including the feedback from the populace, and they develop this plan. And, and in this land use plan, they, they forecast future land use. And in this area that we're talking about, and I'm not trying to say one way or the other, but the plan does say, the plan that we adopted, is that the city council, when considering zoning ordinances, should consider what was recommended in this plan. And we, not this council, but the council in 2016 that adopted it, basically accepted that. So this particular area is categorized, and this is not a zoning category, but it was, the future land use was proposed to be neighborhood commercial. There's no definition in here of what neighborhood commercial is, and we don't have a neighborhood commercial zoning category. We just have business. And in the, and in the B1 category, I think, isn't there some residential allowances in B1? Or is it the other way around, there's B1 allowed in residential?
There's B1 allowed in.
If, if it's on B1, you can build residential in, R1 in a B1.
Okay. So you can build residential in a B1, but it's not necessarily the reverse?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so anyway, it was zoned, I mean, not zoned, so I caught myself there. It was, the future land use chart here in, in the comprehensive plan recommended for that particular area that we're talking about being neighborhood commercial. If you go for the part that fronts Highway 25, that was recommended to be heavy commercial. The neighborhood commercial was the part that, that fronted Old 25. So I just wanted to bring that up. That is in our, what's in our comprehensive plan. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I do have two comments, based on what Mr. Justice says. So I was, Kim and I were on council when a, a business came to the city a few years ago, and based on conditional contracts or whatever, we found out, based on what we have in, in our regulation ordinances, that once that contract is done, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sure you know a lot more about this than I do, but once, in terms of, once a contract's done, hey, we're coming to town, if those ordinances and regulations that the city has and has or does not have, you really have no leg to stand on in terms of those. So if, if so-and-so want to put up a pole barn, and then you come back from the city perspective and say, we don't allow pole barns in the city, well, where's it written down?
Right.
But I also know when you have conditional stuff like that, it's, it could be a deal breaker too. So I understand that. But the other piece of that is, if we're, if we're talking about, just from a, from a city perspective and taking, taking consideration to the homeowners there too. So if we're talking about a major, to your point, a major retail corporation, this national, from a city perspective, and a, and just a revenue generator, that's something we've been talking about for years that's never been here. I mean, that's, that's just the truth about it is. While I understand, I'm thinking if it's retail, the environmental issues are probably very slim. I can understand if they want to put a, if there's a steam plant or something going there, or there's a, you know, whatever, stuff like that. You have to think that retail is pretty tight little ship here to where it's going to be a, a nice amenity to the city and the people that's in it. But again, I don't know the, I don't know the environmental impacts that were mentioned, I don't know that. I mean, obviously, I think if it, again, if it's a retail deal, I think the environmental piece of it has to be limited in scope, right?
Let me, again, let me, let me suggest this.
Yep.
This is just a suggestion. I can, again, I, I, I'm not going to violate any rules or paperwork that I've signed, I'm not going to do that. Again, council, give me five minutes in the executive session. I can answer those questions.
Yep.
And I've not violated anything I've signed, Dr. Thorburn has not violated anything that he's signed. And I, I think I can give you some comfort.
Sure. And I'm, I'm following through on that.
I think I can give you some comfort, I think, and, and, we're, they, as the economy, on a national level, fortunately, not in Chevy County, but on a national level, the economy deteriorates a bit. These people, they look at those trends, they look at retail trends, they look at those sort of things. And so, for every day, there's not a structure there, there's not business happening, they, they look at it as a money loss issue. And I would like to, I would like to put this to bed rather than have another three-month delay. Because quite frankly, they're, they're ready to start moving dirt.
Well, for the sake of the conversation for the public, for our discussion, is what I mentioned. You know, we've been here a long time, and we've been basically begging retail development to come to town. And we spend a lot of money by recruiting all these businesses to town. And I think if everything else falls into place to where the type of business that we feel like it's economical and we feel like it's good for the citizens in the city, we've got a gifted horse looking us right in the mouth. If all those things check into play...
All right, I, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we take a five-minute recess for the executive session that Dantson has proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Is to pass this zoning ordinance to change the zoning from R1 to B1. Now, it, it does have a stipulation in it already, provided that such rezoning is subject to the following condition: compliance with rules, regulations, policies, and procedures of the City of Columbiana. We do have some minimal, we have, what do we call that, that committee that, we're going to talk about it today as far as...
Architectural.
Architectural Review Committee, which is us. Okay? So, so there are some rules and regulations and policies in place in the City of Columbiana. So if there's not any further discussion, is there a motion to adopt the said ordinance?
I make a motion we adopt ordinance 042306. It's an ordinance rezoning property on, at 2267, 22676, Highway 25, from R1 to B1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And I'll ask the clerk to conduct a roll call, though.
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Marcel?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yep.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. So let the record show that the ordinance, 042306... been cured, but we have to go through a process so that we can close the abatement process. But those are the properties that are being considered. So this is the after, you can see it's already been demolished by the property owner and removed. So Kelly Thrasher Fox is the abatement, works for the attorney that, that's handling the abatement process. Is there anything you'd like to add? Yes?
Mayor, before you begin, if the council doesn't need me anymore, I would request that I be saving the city some money and-
You are excused.
I'll be glad to stay here.
I thought you were gonna stay here as a concerned citizen.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, Kelly?
Hello, I'm Kelly Fox, I'm the attorney with hand Eric Wolf Harrison Sale, and we are special counsel to the City of Columbiana and other cities and towns across the state who have dangerous conditions, such as the ones the mayor just went through. And we have a process that we help the city go through to abate those public nuisances. It's dangerous buildings, there's 15 criteria, the mayor mentioned that, checklist, Alan Reynolds, as the municipal official, went through that checklist with each property. And it's things like the pictures you saw, roofs are caving in, the property is open, the, it's falling down to a pile of rubble, there's a tree in it, you know, it could be all sorts of things that invite children to go and investigate, or people to go in and see what they can salvage and steal. And it can result in properties burning down, burning down neighbors' homes, properties falling in on children or people, so they just pose a variety of dangerous situations. So the city approached us, we've worked with the city before on many different dangerous buildings, a few of you were on the council at the time, and we did the pool hall abatement. That was a successful abatement where the property owner, after the city's instigation, filled the property and it's being rehabbed and being returned back to the property tax records and to be used by somebody in the future. So we started the process on, I think it was eight properties originally, and we are down to four, and really three, because the owners of 1081 Egg and Butter Road have cleaned up the property. But the city sends out a formal notice that is filed with the probate court. It's a 10, 11, 12-page notice that gets filed in the probate court. It gets published at various places across the city, City Hall, the Water Works Board, library, which is fourth place?
That's only three.
You're only three?
Mm-hmm.
And then they are posted at various properties. We published notice in the Cheltenham County Reporter to notify any people with interest. We did a title search with Cheltenham County Abstract, sent certified mailings to anybody we could find who had an interest in the property, anybody who'd been paying taxes on the property, basically anybody we could find. And if we couldn't find anybody, we published extra notice multiple times to try to bring it to attention to anyone who may have an interest in the property. So that process has been going on since February, February 21st is when we filed the list pendants. So it has been almost two months where the notice has been out there for people to come forward, and people of 1081 Egg and Butter Road did come forward, they cleaned up their property, and tonight the council will consider a resolution to take no action on that property, and then I'll dismiss the formal notice in the probate court. The other three, and the mayor will have the opportunity to hear comments from anyone, those three were not cleaned up, and so if the city decides after the public hearing tonight to order the demolition, the city will hire someone, use its own workers, to tear down, clean up, return the property to its natural condition, and then we will have another public hearing sometime in the summer or later to assess the cost of that cleanup against the property, and it'll then attach to the tax records. And if anyone tries to buy the property in the future, that lien will have to be paid off at that time. Are there any questions? I know some of y'all have done this many times, but some of you are new to it.
I probably should have had you do this before I opened the hearing, but I appreciate you doing that, so we'll go ahead and proceed with the hearing then, and we can ask questions during that.
We do need Mr. Reynolds to offer a brief testimony that, other than 1081 Egg and Butter Road, if there's been any improvement, or if all the conditions remain as they were in February.
As of today, there have been no improvements on any of the other three properties. Like I said, 1081's on, it's done any cleanup, the rest of them still remain overgrown, falling in. They are dilapidated and stuff to the point that they're not safe for anybody, it's just gonna be a nuisance to the neighbors that live in that area and stuff, and a danger to the public. Like you said, you've got kids and stuff, it's gonna walk in there and say, what's in there? Taking a chance with wild animals, snakes or even bite, being in there.
All right, well, if anybody has questions, we'll be right back.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposed abatements of these properties? In favor? Good. Anyone else in favor of the proposed abatement? Is there anyone who would like to speak against abating these properties? Okay, if there are no comments, further comments in favor or against, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the hearing's adjourned, and we are reconvening the council meeting. So now, this is the property at Highway 460 47 North. I, I know you cannot read this, because it's very small, and we tried to get it on to one page here, so I'm gonna try to summarize this ordinance, if you will, here, hold a second. While you're doing that, is this the property that had a bunch of heirs involved in it?
Yes.
And we couldn't find forever?
Did you ever find, you found the owner?
No.
We found one under a granddaughter, essentially, who came forward. This property was ordered for abatement many years ago. This one granddaughter came forward at the time, and we postponed the proceedings. She was trying to round up all of the various relatives to see if she could get title to the property. This was probably five years ago, when it was in much better condition than it is now. And she did not respond when I tried to reach out to her in connection with these proceedings. She was notified, and we published extra notice on this one, because we didn't know who all those cousins and various family members were. She did not respond this time.
I knew, I remember I was trying, trying to let her do it, so.
Yeah, she had some legal hurdles to get title.
Okay.
And I don't know that, I guess she never was able to.
So what'll, what'll happen when we tear this down with the property?
You'll tear the property down, you'll tally up all the costs associated with that, and then you'll place a lien on that property, which will be filed in the probate court and attached to the tax records. And so if someone in the future tries to buy that property, they will have to pay that lien off. The city will also have the option of foreclosing on their lien. I don't believe y'all have done that before, but what you can do is foreclose on the property, offer it as for sale to the highest bidder, it's an involved process that we would do. And then if someone were to come forward and bid to buy, this particular one is a residential structure, they could buy the property, pay off the lien, which probably back taxes associated with it, they would have to pay those off, and then they could buy, foreclose title to the property, and then rebuild the house.
Be a big number for the law to spend, but-
Oh yeah, that would be a lot.
Okay, so the resolution 042307 is ordering the demolition of the property of 460 Highway 47 North, and so basically, the ordinance basically says that the appropriate municipal official has determined the condition of the building or structure, make it dangerous to life, health, property, et cetera. There has been a filing, a finding of public nuisance, an order to remedy, and a notice of list pendants, and Kelly has mentioned all the various folks who were contacted with, or contacted in order to make sure that they were aware that there was a need to remedy the situation. We did the required by law public postings and, and advertising in, in public newspapers, and so the, the property has been considered dangerous by the municipal official, and so therefore, we are, wish to consider this resolution, I said, called it an ordinance, but this resolution to adopt the actions to proceed with the demolition of the property. So is there a motion to adopt Resolution 042307?
Mr. I make a recommendation we adopt Resolution 042307, it's an ordinance of demolition of property 460 Highway 47 North.
My second.
Second. And let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Maazel?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, let the record show that the resolution was adopted unanimously. Okay, I, I'm not quite sure, and maybe Charlene or Kelly can explain, why was this property identified as 317 Nelson Walker Road?
That is the address that the tax assessor's office has for the particular parcel ID number.
Is that right? Okay. All right, 'cause the, again, the structures are actually located up there at 15 and 25 Wood Lane, and when you look on the GIS, which of course is not official, but it shows that parcel ID number as 317 Nelson Walker Road, so I was just curious, I wanted to make sure that we-
Does that make the 15 and 25 Wood Lane their mailing address, or their-
I think it's just a physical address, not necessarily a mailing address, it's a physical location. Okay, so you can't read it because it's so small, but all the warehouses are pretty much the same as what I just said, so appropriate municipal official has inspected it, we've had the appropriate filings, we've done the appropriate notification, and so we've determined that it's dangerous, and the city council is considering this resolution to demolish the property. So is there a motion to adopt ordinance 042308?
I make a motion we adopt Resolution 042308, order the demolition of property at 317 Nelson Walker Road, as known as 15 and 25 Wood Lane.
My second. And do you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Maazel?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, and once again, this is ordering the demolition of property at 1850 Highway 47 South. This is the old dilapidated schoolhouse building, same situation, do I keep saying ordinance? Anyway, if I do, I apologize, it's a resolution. But anyway, so same thing, inspected by a municipal official, all the appropriate legal filings have been made, and personnel notified, and the municipal official has determined that it's a dangerous property, and the council is gonna consider to whether or not the city wishes to move forward with the demolition. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 042309 for 1850 Highway 47 South?
Mr. I make a recommendation we adopt Resolution 042309, it's ordering the demolition of property at 1850 Highway 47 South.
Second.
Okay, do you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Maazel?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, so five yes and one abstention, resolution passes. Oops. All right, so as was mentioned in the discussion that we had previously, 1081 Egg and Butter
has determined the condition of the building or structure, make it dangerous to life, health, property, et cetera. There has been a filing, a finding of public nuisance, an order to remedy, and a notice of lis pendens. And Kelly has mentioned all the various folks who were contacted with, or contacted in order to make sure that they were aware that there was a need to remedy the situation. We did required by law, public postings and advertising in public newspapers. And so the property has been considered dangerous by the municipal official. And so therefore, we are, wish to consider this resolution, I said it, called it an ordinance, but this resolution to adopt the actions to proceed with the demolition of the property. So is there a motion to adopt Resolution 042307?
Mr. Reynolds, make a recommendation, we adopt Resolution 042307, it's ordered to demolition of property 460 Highway 47 North.
My second.
Second. And let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Mazel?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, you can let the record show that the resolution was adopted unanimously. Okay. I'm not quite sure, and maybe Charlene or Kelly can explain. Why was this property identified as 317 Nelson Walker Road?
That is the address that the tax assessor's office has for the particular parcel ID number.
Is that right? Okay. All right, 'cause the, again, the structures are actually located up there at 1525 Wood Lane. And when you look on the GIS, which of course is not official, but it shows that parcel ID number as 317 Nelson Walker Road, so I was just curious, I wanted to make sure that we.
Does that make the 15 and 25 Wood Lane their mailing address, or their?
I think it's just a physical address, not necessarily a mailing address. It's a physical location. Okay, so you can't read it because it's so small, but all the wear acids are pretty much the same as what I just said. So the appropriate municipal official has inspected it. We've had the appropriate filings, we've done the appropriate notification. And so we've determined that it's dangerous and the city council is considering this resolution to demolish the property. So is there a motion to adopt ordinance 042308?
I'd like a motion, we adopt Resolution 042308, order the demolition of property at 317 Nelson Walker Road, as known as 15 and 25 Wood Lane.
My second. And do you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Mazel?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, and once again, this is ordering the demolition of property at 1850 Highway 47 South. This is the old dilapidated schoolhouse building. Same situation. Do I keep saying ordinance? Anyway, if I do, I apologize, it's a resolution. But anyway, so same thing, inspected by a municipal official, all the appropriate legal filings have been made and personnel notified. And the municipal official has determined that it's a dangerous property. And the council is going to consider to whether or not the city wishes to move forward with the demolition. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 042309 for 1850 Highway 47 South?
Mr. Reynolds, make a recommendation, we adopt Resolution 042309, it's ordered to demolition of the property at 1850 Highway 47 South.
Second.
Okay, you can let the call roll, please.
Councilmember Lilly?
Abstain.
Mazel?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, so five yes and one abstention. Resolution passes. Oops. All right, so as was mentioned in the discussion that we had previously, 1081 Egg and Butter Road has been remedied. The property owner tore down the buildings and cleaned up the property. But there is a process, obviously, where we have to complete the legal process. So. Trying to look at the terms that we put in here. We're basically adopting this resolution to say that there's good cause not to demolish the structures because they're not there anymore. And it has, this time, the dangerous condition has been remedied to the city's satisfaction. And Kelly, we call this what? The fact that we're not demolishing it?
Taking no action.
It's basically a notice of no action, okay? So is there a motion to adopt Resolution 42310, that's right there on the chart, take no action?
Mr. Reynolds, make a recommendation, we adopt Resolution 042310, it's take no action on property at 1081 Egg and Butter Road.
My second. And we'll go ahead and do a roll at all.
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Mazel?
Yes.
Ruston?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. So let the record show that the resolution passed unanimously. Okay, one more resolution. Justa Tish LLC, which operates under Justa Tish Wine &amp; More, on, basically just off College Street and I guess that would be northeast of the Old Mill Square, is going to be moving to Main Street. And as they move, they're also gonna have an area where they'll have some outdoor seating. And so they need to amend their alcoholic beverage control license to allow for on and off premise consumption so that folks can sit outside on their patio and have wine or beer, if you will, there. So that's the purpose of this resolution, for the city to grant Justa Tish their request and charge the city, and ask the city clerk to send a letter to the alcoholic beverage control board saying that the city approves of this change. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation, we adopt Resolution 042311, it's ABC license for Justa Tish LLC.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Lilly?
Yes.
Mazel?
Yes.
Ruston? King? Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes, so let the record show that the resolution passed unanimously. Okay, so we have some people here that have probably been waiting a long time for this. Unfortunately, it got put at the bottom of the agenda. But this is Child Abuse Prevention Month in Columbia. And we raised it at our last council meeting, and I was disappointed that we didn't have a proclamation from the city to recognize that, but we have remedied that situation. So we abated that problem, if you will, so to speak. So anyone care to speak about Child Abuse Awareness Month? Any of the representatives here?
Sure, sure. Just real quick, I won't waste a lot of time, I know we've been here for a while, but I'm Laurel Teal. I'm the new director of Owen's House, I've been there since September. We're the Child Abuse Center for Shelby County. And we help law enforcement partners and DHR caseworkers investigate child abuse cases. We also offer free follow-up counseling for any child who has come to our office. And then we help them through the court process. And then we also go into Shelby County schools and Pelham City schools and do education classes for kids ages kindergarten through third grade in all of those schools. So we play a really, really big role in preventing child abuse in Shelby County. And we are really delighted that you guys added us to the, to the agenda today. And we have some of our partners here, so we have Tanya and Fitz. And Fitz is laying down, he's our facility dog down there. Kathy Hitt is one of our board members, and she also owns the farm company on Main Street. And Jody Tally is one of our assistant district attorneys. And then my staff, Carrie, and Erica, and Tori are all here, so we appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for what you do.
And Fitz is an amazing dog, I do want to say this. The leader coffee and tea on the corner, in recognition of Child Abuse Awareness Month, and in recognition of Fitz, has created a drink called a Fitzaccino. And after I heard it at the chamber luncheon a couple of weeks ago, I went, I walked straight over there and had one, and it's very good. And you can have it hot, or you can have it chilled, or you can have it like a Frappuccino and a frozen drink. And if you purchase one, a dollar, from every Fitzaccino that is sold will go to the Owens' house. I recommend everybody go out and purchase a Fitzaccino. You'll have a nice beverage and you'll be doing something good at the same time, so.
Mayor, you're kind of also saying that there's all other businesses that are doing things. Hometown Nutrition, she's created a drink, she's donating part of the proceeds to that Owens' house.
It's her second year to do that.
Yes, and then Sweet Twins, on the end, they created a handle, and part of the proceeds of that is going to Owens' house. So, and Amazing Flowers, she did a walk chalk thing that she raised money over the weekend. And then of course, I've done pretty much everything we should. But we've got T-shirts, and all, every bit of the proceeds goes to the Owens' house that we sold. We sold, right now, over a thousand dollars worth of T-shirts, that all the proceeds goes to the Owens' house.
Well, that's perfect.
It's wonderful to see all the pinwheels if you drive through Main Street, all the pinwheels in the blue, that's for us. So it's just been really great to see the support, and then the banners that are, the banners are beautiful. So thank you guys, and it's gonna be even bigger next year, just wait. You know, we're at Intire, we're at Justa Tish on Main Street, and we got the new Mexican restaurant, so we'll see what they do next year.
I have to say that as a resident of Columbia, I am so proud of our city for supporting such a wonderful cause. I mean, Owens' House has been in our city for years, and we've always supported them, you know, individually. But it is, it is very heartwarming to see my city support these ladies and what they do and what they stand for and the children that they help. It's meant a lot. And I've heard lots of people around the courthouse, you know, commenting about the banners, about the pinwheels. And it just means a lot that you guys allowed them to do that, thank you very much.
Well, I will tell the council, everybody that's here, that if you ever get the opportunity to see Fitz in action, that is an amazing dog. I mean, he's like, he does all sorts of tricks, he sleeps, but he wakes up with tricks.
He must have had a hard day today.
I think his inaction at times is amazing.
We agree.
Okay, so, you know, I brought this up last council meeting, and there is no more precious gift than we've been given than our children. And, you know, God has entrusted us to care for them and to raise them. Unfortunately, some children have it tough, okay? And so we're appreciative of having a facility like Owens' House in Columbia that can help us do that. And this city is certainly more than proud to proclaim April as National Child Abuse Awareness Month. So it is proclaimed officially, we got a piece of paper. All right. A picture? Okay. Where do you want this, how do you want this picture done? Do you want us to stay up here?
Yeah.
Okay. Squish? Okay.
Do you want us in different?
Yeah, we're gonna be looking down on you.
Thank you, guys.
And we're gonna, we're gonna squish together, hopefully you can get Fitz into that picture. Are you gonna get in it, Kev?
He's gonna smile real good.
She's trying to say no.
She always tries to get out of pictures. Oh, where am I looking? Oh, over there.
Gotta look over here, trying to work Fitz into the photo.
Come on, dog. Smile good.
All right, ready, one, two, three?
All righty.
Good job, bubba, you did a good job. Bye, dude.
Good to see you. Take care, be careful. Okay, so we'll try to move along and get this thing wrapped up here, so. Any other city business that we have? We did want to discuss the Architectural Review Board to consider Main Street, Columbia's Design Committee's Building Color Guide. And so these are the proposed colors. Actually, if you want to see them on a different type of color chart where they're more vibrant, they're here. Do. I'm not sure what we're asking here, is we're asking for an approval from the council for this, this color schematic. And so when we do convene our Architectural Review Board for Main Street improvements, this is the color scheme. Now, would this, these colors apply to the street-facing areas or all areas?
So they would, for, within, this is within the Main Street District. So it would be street-facing and the, and the, yours, and the back.
So what about the buildings that might have murals painted on them?
Those would be the exception, like it would not be for a mural, it would just be, you know.
The exterior colors?
They have to pick one of these. And instead of those businesses having to come to council for the architectural reviews, they would already have these as their, their basic color plus their trim color, and they wouldn't have to come to council every time.
So there is one, I think, problem that we have. If a property owner wants to make improvements to their property, there are many things that they can do, like painting, without a permit, okay? And if they don't come in and apply for a permit, then we would have no way of knowing that they were gonna do these changes. And I would argue, or suggest, maybe that's a better word to use, that the businesses don't know what this color scheme is. And so theoretically, a business owner could come in and paint the exterior of their building bright orange. And that's happened? Yes, it has, okay? And would we, the city, what would our recourse be? And unfortunately, because he was wanting to get off the clock, we don't have our city attorney here. So I don't, you know, would we want to say, hey, you gotta repaint your building? And, because we don't technically have an ordinance for this sort of stuff.
I was about to say that we need to consider adopting an ordinance resolution, that way for Main Street communities.
Well, I think, I think it kinda goes to a little bit about what we discussed in the executive session about facades and appearances. And to your point, I think the answer is yes, I think we need to have that. It needs to be a carefully considered ordinance because we don't want to make it burdensome. Sure. But it certainly needs to be reasonable. And like I said, we want, in the meantime, we need to have some, some process to where if someone acquires a piece of property in the Main Street District, we have a way of making them aware of what the rules and regulations are that would apply to them. So we need to figure out how to do that as well. Okay, so the issue before us is this color scheme. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns about the proposed color scheme? It's, it's a bit more vibrant than what it shows up on this, at least this is, than I was getting, than what shows up there. I would go with one little house blue. All right. Should we have a vote on this?
You can just have like a motion in a second to approve and just.
So is there a motion to approve the proposed color scheme?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay, and does there need to be? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the motion has been approved. Okay, mayor's report, I'm gonna go through this real quick. So I am, I am required by statute, and this is a statute right here, that says the mayor has to give a semi-annual written statement to the city council of the city's financial condition and show all temporary floating indebtedness for what it was created and the steps he or she will take to protect the credit of the city. I have provided the council members a written copy of that report. I'm gonna just hit a couple of highlights. So this is, we show this every month. And so as of March, you know, basically, this is our general fund budget, and this is our, the budget cumulative of all of our funds, including the general fund. And in this budget, we have proposed a surplus at this point in time of about 1.0, almost 1.5 million dollars. We have a surplus of almost 1.7 million dollars, so we've got a positive variance of about 215,000. And for the sum of all funds, we have proposed at this point in time a surplus of 1.8 million dollars, and we have a little over almost 1.9 million dollars, so a $92,000 surplus. The bottom line, as Charlene had mentioned, we're pretty much tracking right to plan year-to-date, okay? So let me just kinda give you a couple of notes and concerns here. One thing I want to talk about is budgeting versus accounting. GASB stands for Government Accounting Standard Board. That is the rules that determine how governments, municipal and otherwise, account for their costs. It's different from commercial accounting and whatnot. And it's the rules that our accountants prepare our financial statements to, and it's the rules to which they conduct the audit. But when we budget, it's basically a cash budget, okay? It's like your checkbook. We say, you know, we're gonna have this much revenue, we're gonna incur this many expenses, and this is what we're gonna have left at the end of the day. There is an exception to that. The one expense that we do accrue rather than recognize on a cash basis is payables. So we, am I correct there? So we accrue the payables, and so they will show up in the expense column when they're accrued, not necessarily when they're actually, the check is cut. But pretty much everything else is done on a cash basis. So when our audit comes down and you see the audit reports, in fact, we haven't received our fiscal year 22 audit report yet, but when we get it, when you see numbers, they will talk about a, instead of a net surplus, they talk about a net position, which one would think would be, would change by the amounts here, but it doesn't necessarily because they account for things differently, and they refer to it as a modified accrual basis of accounting. I just wanted to say that there is a difference between the numbers in the budget and the numbers in the financial statements. But this is the tool that we use to manage our day-to-day finances. Now, rule of thumb for how much surplus you should have, we budgeted a surplus for the whole year of 1.3 million dollars, right here at the bottom. The rule of thumb, and there's, there is no laid-out rule, there is nothing that you're required to do, but I did some research on it, and pretty much the general, again, rule of thumb that they recommend is two months of general fund expenditures is how much of a reserve or a surplus that a city should hold. So for us, that's about 1.1 million dollars. On this budget, we did about a 1.3. Now, the difference is, the general fund is what we pay most of our bills out of. And so there are, all of this is, for lack of a better term, cash in the bank, if you will, these reserves. But some of these funds have restrictions on what we can spend them on. So, but this is where we expect them to be at the end of the year. So we do, we did meet the rule of thumb of having at least two months of reserve from our general fund expenditures. I did want to bring that we are gonna anticipate about a $300,000 potential overrun in our budget this year because of issues that we've had with the paving of Center Street. And we're gonna be moving forward, hopefully within the next month, of getting that work finally done. The issue arose back in January, so it's been a significant inconvenience for the, for the residents there. However, at least in the last several years, we have ended up with a surplus. we've ended up fiscal year with a surplus significantly higher than what we budgeted because of different reasons. We weren't able to complete certain tasks, and we didn't spend the money that we had planned to spend. And there is a probability that that will be the case this year. So, even though there is a potential that we could have a budget overrun, we may not, because some of the things that we had planned to spend money on, we won't, we probably won't spend it all. So, the big thing on there for me to talk about is the credit of the city. So, our standard and poor's rating is double A. However, we don't typically get a annually updated standard and poor's credit rating, unless we're gonna do something like refinancing or refunding the city's debt, issue bonds, or something like that. Did some research, and about 30-something percent, around 30% of municipalities in the nation have a triple A credit rating. The vast majority, it's almost like a bell curve, the vast majority of the municipalities have a double A rating, and then another 30%, in fact, I got it wrong. It's only about 16% have triple A, and 30% have only a one A. So, Columbiana is very strongly with a double A rating kinda right there in the middle. So, my question's always been, how much debt is too much debt? And once again, there's no guidelines or anything like that, and different folks use different things. Did some research on it, and some folks look at it as a function of your total general fund expenditures, or others will look at it, and this is the one that I liked, as a percentage of your debt service being a percentage of your recurring revenues and fees. That would be things like your recurring tax revenues, and your fees from, like, business licenses, and even garbage fees. It would not be proprietary fund fees like the sewer fund, because they fund the sewer operations, but, but it is those recurring taxes and fees. But even though they said that's a good thing to look at, I was, when I was at the league meeting training last week, we had a presentation from the accounting and finance director for the city of Montgomery. They use the percentage of general funds. I mentioned to him this thing about the percentage of taxes and recurring taxes and fees. He says, oh, I like that. So, he went back and he calculated it for Montgomery and sent me the number. Now, they didn't have a rule of thumb. He said, when he took the job, they were, basically felt like their debt was too high, they were trying to get it down. And so, what he did is he calculated the before and after, and their percentage of recurring taxes and fees was 13% when they started, and it's 9% now, so they've dropped it down. Ours is 15.7%. And I found this metric in an article where they were evaluating a city that they felt like had too much debt. That city's percentage of debt service compared to the recurring taxes and fees was about 18%. So, my message is, we need to watch future debt. It's, we're getting near probably the top of that scale. Most of that debt's associated with the Old Mill Square, and over time, you know, those metrics will change and hopefully improve in our thinking. So, that's pretty much it. Any questions on this? Okay, announcements?
So, this Saturday, April 22nd, is, it's Columbiana Cleanup Days, and we start at eight at the seniors' center. And they'll have gloves and little grabbers and trash bags and all the supplies, so. And then, also this Saturday, from eight to noon, the Shelby County High School Food Club will paint the Paul Prance back on Washington Street.
Yay!
Yay!
So, very excited about that.
So, they're gonna paint 'em now, Ally?
For now.
You said, paint 'em now, Russ?
We're gonna paint on Saturday, Saturday morning, so. And then, the schedule for Music on Main and the farmer's market is there. We have two more bands to schedule, but I've talked to some people today, so they're gonna see what day they can choose, so.
Will, will you let Lisa Davis know about the Paul Prance? She may already know about it, because that was a project, and she and I talked about, about the...
That's why I said yay.
But to that point, that may be something notifications will be doing in the fall to reinforce them for football season, so.
Yeah. They're, the key club has not been active at the high school for a while, and so, this was the project that was...
Did they get the stencil?
They did, so they have the stencil and all, but...
They did, all right, but...
That's what I'm hoping.
It's supposed to rain during the night, and hopefully, it will not be raining.
Okay, any other questions for Ally?
If, if it does rain, clean it, then we'll reschedule for another weekend.
I was gonna show a little thing about the big city rhythm, but we're running so late, I'll skip that. I'll click on it when we're packing up the league. If there's no other questions for Ally, any, this is where we open it up for public comment. Any other public comments, other than what we've heard in the hearings?
Since we talked about it late, and I'm gonna tear down the property, how is that a mission? Is that, I guess, maybe it's like a republic inspired by it?
Well, you can certainly, you can certainly raise that concern. I would recommend first you raise it to your council member. And then, the first thing is that the city should send, just send them a basic letter, not a legal letter, and communicate with them and say, you have this problem that we think you need to fix. You need to cure it or remedy it, and give them a reasonable amount of time to do that. And if they don't do that, then we go to someone like Ms. Fox, and she will prepare the legal process for us to go through. Now, typically, you know, initially, we're just gonna go by what we can see, because you're not gonna be given, we don't have the right to go on people's property and go inside their buildings and inspect it. And, you know, we had one who came and objected to the abatement notice that they got, and when we asked them if we could have access to their property to inspect it, they did not volunteer to do that. But nevertheless, that problem got resolved, and it was not one of the properties that you saw today. But anyway, so that'd be pretty much the process. If you have a concern, talk to your council member, then we can get the details, and then, if we think it meets the criteria for abatement, we'll first start by just sending the friendly letter, if you will. And then, if we don't get any remedy after that, we will, you know, go through the formal abatement process that we'd sort of discussed today.
Yeah, then she brushed, the attorney brushed a few things. It was, like, check a few of the boxes that's, you know, already there. So, I guess I'll give my council member.
Yeah.
And our representative, and, 'cause you need something official. I spotted it on this date, but you really can't go by what I saw, just by this date, and then move forward from there.
Well, I mean, abatements primarily, when you say I spotted it on this date, should be like a continuing condition of the property.
That's right. Like a blue tar on the roof and siding and all, and windows rustled out, just the...
Is that a problem?
It is.
I shouldn't believe that, too. Okay?
Somebody living there?
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Oh, the second comment, you guys voted on the new zone, which I wasn't for or against, Justa Tish. But you guys obviously voted on it, which I said, like I said, I'm not for or against. As you guys are looking over and thinking about, just consider the neighbors. There's gonna be, obviously, there's gonna be a front to the store and a rear. Think about what's going on the rear, of those people living there, and I know you will. You know, just, we have an issue enforcing ordinance inside our communities, not so much with our commercial properties. But I know you guys are on top of that. I'm just thinking about the neighbors, and where the trash will be, where the pallets will be stacked up, or, you know, where the trash will blow to, just, you know, keep those things in the back of your mind, just as a citizen. I know you guys will, just keep those things in mind. The other, the other thing you guys should check out is a documentary called The High Cost of Low Prices. Just check that documentary out, it's a very good documentary. It deals with the cities, the size of Columbia, and probably about the business that you're thinking about, talking about. It's very in-depth and in detail. Nothing else, it's just, it's a good, it's a good, our good, good thing to watch, good documentary.
Okay, high cost of low prices.
The high cost of low prices.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Seven.
And meeting adjourned.